Good evening, good day to all being here, our visitors, our regulars, the tighties, and of course, our press that's kind enough to come and could word out about what we do. What took place in the meeting? We have Pastor Charles Murphy here. He will voice our prayer, and then we'll go down to Jason, Mr. Hudlin, and he will voice our pledge allegiance for us, so Pastor Murphy.
Father in heaven, holy and reverenced is your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Thank you for the privilege that we have of approaching your throne and grace. Thank you for your son who has made it possible for us to come to you in prayer, his giving his life for our sins on the cross, and is rising again from the dead. You've told us to bring every concern that we have to you. We know that nothing's too great, nothing's too small, and we want to come to you and on behalf of this meeting and this council, we thank you for this council and the leaders in our city, their willingness to serve, and we just pray that you would guide them in their decisions. We ask that you would bless them and their families and meet their physical and their spiritual needs. And we just thank you for the privilege that we have of living in a free land. Thank you for how you blessed America. May we seek you, and may we trust in you. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Please join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We always appreciate our pastors. Thank you Pastor Murphy. Jump in and go ahead and start it. We've got a few things to go through, and I'll do that. We have the public hearing notice, and we'll get into the public hearing first, and it's related to our 2012-2013 annual budget, and it gives the citizens a chance during this public hearing to voice any opinions or concerns or any thoughts on the annual budget. If you have someone who has and would like to voice something, just let us know. Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and move to the agenda. Open up the Clinton Hospital Authority, Clinton Recreational Authority, Clinton Solid Waste Authority, and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. No action items? City managers report for any of these authorities?
None of these authorities.
Okay, we have a spot here for audience participation. If you have something under the Hospital Authority, Recreational Authority, or Solid Waste Authority you'd like to bring before the council, you have that opportunity. If you have a general item, we'll have a spot under the Clinton City Council for those at that time. So, anyone that had any comments related to any of these authorities, we currently have them. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn these authorities.
Second. Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Open up the regular meeting of the Clinton Airport Authority and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
Second. Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Any other action items? Consider bid for reconstruction of Hanger Aprons, Clinton Regional Airport.
The engineer's estimate first.
Top engineering base bid estimate on the reconstruct Hanger Aprons project 3-40-021, 0021-011-2012. Base bid is $390,081 and no cents. 390, 081, and no cents. Alternate bid, alternate number one is a reduction of $5,420. And alternate bid number two is a reduction of $2,710. Everybody get that fine? 390, 081, $5,420 reduction, $2,710 reduction. First bid will open up circle S paving from here in Clinton. Base bid, $353,881 and 30 cents. 353,881 and 30, 30 cents. Alternate number one is a reduction of $650.40. And alternate number two is a reduction of $1,463.40. The reduction, alternate number two was a reduction of $1,463.40.
Of the alternates in there, Steve, in case the base bid is too high?
Toby, you want to basically ask?
The alternates are to use instead of reinforced concrete pipe, to use a core-headed metal or a high-density polyethylene pipe instead of concrete pipe.
Toby, second.
Next one is from Cornell Construction County right here in Clinton. Okay. Total base bid, I'm going to make sure, I know I've got two copies here, so I'll make sure I'm looking at the same. Total base bid from Cornell Construction is $472,742.34. 472, 742 dot 34. Alternate number one is a reduction of $21,273.50. 21, 273 dot 50. And, oh, no. Hang on, guys, they've got it broken up just a little bit different here. Scratch that information. I'm going to give you the total alternate bid. They don't have it down as a reduction, they have it down as a new bid, that is a lower amount, so if you would, just bear with me, say, the base bid, we have, the alternate bid number one is $469,761.34. That is alternate number one. And we go to alternate number two, once again, they have that also in just the total, not the reduction, but just the total bid. Total alternate number two bid is $469,151.59. 469, 151 dot 59. Any questions there? Did you get that? This is the best one, I think normally we refer these to staff. Do you want an approval on this?
No, I'd like to have it back for myself and Toby for review, and we'll give back recommendation. We also need to make sure we work with FAA submitting these as well, so.
Okay, and I entertain a motion that we refer these to staff for a subsequent later recommendation as to the best and least expensive.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. And we will look at, move on to the second action item, consider agreement for transfer of entitlement with the City of Thomas regarding non-primary entitlement federal funds. Well, this is a ties back to the next one also. Steve, you want to give us an overview?
Well, basically, this is a paperwork item that will work through FAA, but if our bids came in high, this would allow us, give us a little bit more flexibility, then for our allocated money in the next year, they'll reduce that paperwork to allow Thomas, Thomas is not ready to do the project, I'm summarizing that correctly, Toby. So, really, nothing for you, you accept this, and Thomas' council, or Airport Authority will accept it as well, so they can then not lose their funding, they'll be able to get funding then, and next year for their project.
Any questions or comments related to this from the council? Any questions or comments from any one in the audience? Not seeing any, have a motion to approve it? Second.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. And the next one here, next action item, Steve?
Well, basically, this is a reduction to the scope of work with Cobb Engineering, this thing you'd like to see, so due to some of the amendments, this will drop the cost a lot, Toby, I mean?
The, this one is actually a contract amendment that will increase the contract amount by an amount that is less than what we originally estimated.
Correct.
So, what you're saying, the customer?
Compared to what? Yeah, what we estimated.
Any questions or comments from the city manager related to this?
No, we recommend, I mean, this is obviously, the scope originally is dropped, so we've, obviously, this is a no-brainer, basically, we're going to cancel it.
Move, we approve this amendment?
Second. Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. And how about the next one here, next action item, Steve?
Well, basically, this is a reduction to the scope of work with Cobb Engineering, this thing you'd like to see, so due to some of the amendments, this will drop the cost a lot, Toby, I mean?
The, this one is actually a contract amendment that will increase the contract amount by an amount that is less than what we originally estimated.
Correct. So, what you're saying, the customer?
Compared to what? Yeah, what we estimated.
Any questions or comments from the city manager related to this?
No, we recommend, I mean, this is obviously, the scope originally is dropped, so we've, obviously, this is a no-brainer, basically, we're going to cancel it.
Move, we approve this amendment?
Second. Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Any city managers report for the Clinton Public Works Authority?
Well, basically, this is a reduction to the scope of work with Cobb Engineering, this thing you'd like to see, so due to some of the amendments, this will drop the cost a lot, Toby, I mean?
The, this one is actually a contract amendment that will increase the contract amount by an amount that is less than what we originally estimated.
Correct. So, what you're saying, the customer?
Compared to what? Yeah, what we estimated.
Any questions or comments from the city manager related to this?
No, we recommend, I mean, this is obviously, the scope originally is dropped, so we've, obviously, this is a no-brainer, basically, we're going to cancel it.
Move, we approve this amendment?
Second. Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Any city managers report for the Public Works Authority?
A couple of things, our valve issue that we had break, insurance approved that claim, we'll be receiving a check, we're going to cover the cost from our contractor that we approved last year. You also know Arnold Adams, Public Works Director, has announced his resignation, he's moving on to the City of Yukon, we appreciate his service, just want to announce that, is a, in the day with us will be the end of the month, the 29th, and so, we appreciate his service. That's all I have.
I've told Arnold, and I've told a couple of people, it's kind of odd, because I've watched his boys grow up as Clinton Red Tornadoes, and so, he'll be in a new area, but he'll probably have a larger lunch selection of places than we will, and I would recommend the first thing you do is go grace him, take you out to a really nice restaurant, just put a real notch in his credit card. Good luck, we appreciate what you've done for us.
Steve, can we, can we get kind of an update on the water situation?
Oh, yeah, I was going to give that to council, but, yes, we've been working on some wells, worked on a well just on the east of Acme, I'm sorry, west of Acme, really hoping we have water there. Once we're, once there was water there, it came out dry. Initial test hole at Acme today, show some water, we'll do testing tomorrow, and we'll do the west side of Acme as well. I am going to, you know, even if Acme comes in with some water, I don't, I'm not sure that's a 50-year plan, but it is a supplemental runoff, which we want to do, and we'll continue that plan. I'm going to bring in a consultant, an engineer, that, that can cover some things Garber did not cover, such as, do we need to, because some of the water we're finding in the area is so hard, you know, Garber mentioned that really conservation, unless you can pull some of the water from Acme is really what we want to look at, I think that's not quite where I want to finish that up, I don't think that's a 50-year plan that the community deserves. I'd like to see where we can go, do we need to upgrade our current water facility and pump some of this hard water from the Washtau, Milluviel, to that location? Do we, is there, is there a 50-year source aquifer close to us that we can pump to Clinton Lake? What would those costs be? Do we need to, do we need to talk about an upgrade at our current facility, or do we need a complete plan for a new facility, an R O facility, to, you know, what are those costs? And I'm going to bring somebody over the next 30 days that can tell me that, that Garber did not cover, and I think we just didn't get that information, I want to get that information, but I think, although, Acme may cover that temporarily, possibly, that's pending if the water's not hard, which we don't know yet, which we know there's some gyps in there, so there could be, but what is the plan besides crossing our fingers and hope rain comes, that's not what we want to do. I think we're going to get that, and we're going to continue to use Foss, but we need a supplemental, a diverse plan that I think, we may need to do what some cities in West Texas do, and that's, we may have to go get some water 50 miles away and pump it back to Clinton Lake, but what's that cost? And what kind of financial plan is that going to take? And that may take some time to put together, and I know we were hoping that local wells would cover it, it's very simple, the wells we're seeing are not going to be enough to really bring us the type of water we need to cover our community's needs for long-term, maybe short-term, possibly, long-term, not so much, so I'm going to have a report for you in 30 days that tells you some things we just didn't get in that last report, and I hope that'll maybe answer some questions that we need to, we need to have quickly.
How close are we getting Clinton Lake's treatment facility online? Is that, what is our plan?
By the end of next week, we'll be ready in case we need to turn Clinton Lake back on.
So, all the repairs are completed by next week, and everything will be ready to kind of get the system flushed, and, yeah, that's what, I mean, that's what we've been waiting for, just to wrap up.
And like we said before, once we turn Clinton Lake back on, then basically, it has to stay on. We can run it 12 hours a day, but we need to run it every day, we can't let it settle, you know, for two days, or we'd have to.
And I'll be honest with you, I don't want to turn Clinton Lake on until I have to.
Right.
And I will say this, we really appreciate the community's conservation efforts, because it is, we have been able to manage with Foss, and a little moisture we've gotten has really slowed things down, and so, we have been very fortunate to buy some time and some length here to allow Clinton Lake to repair the facility, as well as not have to bring it online yet, you know, if we can get to June, now we, now can we get to July, you know, we're going to try to push that back as long as we can, to allow these rains to help with replenishment, maybe the wells that can possibly add a little bit more water to, and also, in fact, we just don't need to pull out of Clinton Lake. And so, those plans, we'll continue that effort, as well as, you know, I want to bring back something that has a, and this could be a very expensive, long-term plan, but I think the community deserves to have something that save, you know, protects us, have a water source for the next 50 years, not just covers until we hope rain comes, and I think there's some, you know, bulldozer work, dredging work, those are all things we need to talk about, but where is the water that we can bring, and what does it cost to treat that water, and we need to talk about those things. We didn't get that in the Garber report, so I'm going to get that for you in the next, I hope, in July.
You know, I tend to agree with Steve, I don't, I think the longer we can wait to turn Clinton Lake on, the better off we'll be, I mean, we might, you know, we're in a position to turn it on right now, but the longer we wait, the better off we'll be.
Oh, we're ready, but we're still a lot more to turn it off when we pass.
Now, I really meant to ask, conservation's going to help this, the moisture we're seeing is keeping things down.
If we had to put an inch guess on what Clinton Lake has done, is it up an inch or two with the recent rains, or is it pretty much just?
Pretty much the same. If you'll notice, the lake has went up two foot, we dumped the west lake into the big lake. Some of the trend, had their technical people look at it, with the depth of the west lake was only averaged two or three feet, it was better to dump that and make the big lake deeper, make that quality of the water better. Now, the south lake has an average depth of eight feet, so they said it's better, leave that there, because it's eight foot, that quality's staying good, we can dump it anytime we want, but, and it's still, it's full, it's running over, south lake is still.
How many gallons would be in that, that, that way?
Uh, 30 million, 30 to 40 million probably.
I think it comes back to what we talked about, we've got some quick fixes for a few million, which sounds like a lot of money to me, but, and they're not a long-term fix, I agree with what's been set up here, we need to go to a long-term, something that's going to fix the problem for the future. We get rains tomorrow, we can be back to where Clinton Lake can be fixed, but I think this is a great calling card, even if we have water in Clinton Lake, it's something we need to look at, we need to fix this problem, so five years, seven years down the road, we don't have the same problem. Any other questions or comments by the council? Questions or comments by anyone in the audience related to this particular item? Or anything on the public works? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Public Works Authority.
Second. Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Moving on to the regular meeting of the Clinton Industrial Authority, we'll open it up, entertain a motion to approve or consent agenda.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Intervene action item, consider review of housing plat for our Public Works Authority. Take a look at that, and Steve, you want to give us just a little overview?
Okay, council, as Joe told you last meeting, he would make some adjustments to what we talked about. I couldn't be more pleased with this, I think this is a very attractive layout plat, he has to make a couple of small adjustments to the front, excuse me, some front lots, but we do anticipate well over 40 lots in this area, and I'll be honest with you, council, I think we, if you'll, you see the estimate on the cost, around $380,000 for infrastructure, but you'll get a lot firmer once we go to final plat, and I would recommend we go to final plat, begin this, and wrap this up, so we can begin this housing plan and funding plan, and get this off the ground.
I like the final plat.
How do you see it? It's approved, definitely.
Good job.
Yeah, I like, I like the final plat as well.
I move, we can go ahead and prepare the final plat.
Second. Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. And excited, dropping back, city managers report for the Clinton Industrial Authority?
Well, council, just kind of, I'll get with Joe, he's out of town, I apologize, couldn't make it tonight, but I'll get with him, and it'll probably be another month, but we'll bring back kind of the final plat and information, and bring you updated in two weeks, and keep you up to speed on what's happening, and then we'll get some closer numbers of what infrastructure is going to cost, and then we'll bring you the plan for the, how we recommend the financing for the project, but, yeah, we're very pleased with it, and we look forward to moving forward on this. And I'll, just to go back, and I apologize, I'm going to mention this in the public, I am putting together and giving the job description, and I will be immediately trying to find a replacement for our Public Works Director, so I will be working on that, because these kind of items, water, housing, these are things we'll, we'll continue that, so, that's all I have with that.
Steve, as far as the other land we brought out on, so before, West, do you have any thoughts and process about how we address that property, do we move on it, what happens with this situated, if that's still something you're considering?
Well, council, my thoughts have always been to tackle this one at this point, because I want to know what the costs were for infrastructure, after that, we'll solidify and see the interest. Once this is phased and starts beginning, I thought we definitely want to begin that plat for the next phase. I thought the next phase could also possibly, it's large enough, being 32 acres, there could be a mixed use, where it could talk about possibly multifamily and single-family dwelling, I've not talked about that with you, put that plan together, but I, but I know there's a need as well there, actually, could be water on the location, we may have to drill a well on that location if we, if we think there's water there, so that may be a good spot for water, so there's some different things we could play on that property, but I will bring that back, but I wanted to get this one moving forward before we got too far ahead of ourselves, and we also want to talk about the industrial area, too, that we need possibly plat, because we get more and more calls that, you know, that I think there's a need, and there continues to be a need for, for industrial growth in this area.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager, under the city manager's report from the council? Any questions or comments under audience participation under the Clinton Industrial Authority related to this particular authority? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Clinton Industrial Authority.
Second. Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Hudlin?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Have several action items under this public hearing regarding rezoning of property 116-South Ten, and Steve, I'll let you give us a little overview of the public hearing.
I have council's location, as you know, on South Ten, basically, to continue as a commercial area, staff didn't have any objections to that, and that's been being used for that already at this time, so we'll continue that.
Under the public hearing section, any questions or comments by anyone in the public related to this notice to rezone? Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close up that public hearing, and consider ordinance 937 regarding rezoning of the property we just discussed, 116-South Ten, to C4 General Commercial District. Anything we need to add to this, Steve?
No.
It's basically following along with what the actual usage is.
Right. Is that any issues with this at all?
Can I ask what prompted this, this to happen? Is it somebody wanting to do something different, or?
No, I mean, it just, compliance, really.
Well, it's been, it's been a big year.
Oh, I know, it's been a long.
But when a business changes hands, that's really when it kicked in, so it changed to a different business, they were grandfathered in, this created the fact, they need to have this rezoning change, so that's really what prompted it, and staff noticed it, we told them.
Trusty Huglen?
Yes.
Trusty Marcy?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodoff?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes, going to dismiss us. Open up the regular meeting of the Clinton City Council and entertain a motion to approve or consent agenda.
Second.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Have several action items under this public hearing regarding rezoning of property one sixteen South Ten. And Steve, I'll let you give us a little review of the public hearing.
I have council's location, as you know, on, on, South Ten, basically, um, to, to continue as a commercial area. Staff didn't have any objections to that, and that's been the use of that already for this time, so we'll continue that.
Under the public hearing section, any questions or comments by anyone in the public related to this notice to rezone? Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close up that public hearing. Consider ordinance nine thirty-seven regarding rezoning of the property we just discussed, one sixteen South Ten, to C four, general commercial district. Anything we need to add to this, Steve?
No.
It's basically following along with what the actual usage is.
Right. It might, I, is staff having issues with this at all?
Can I ask what prompted this, this to happen? Is it somebody wanting to do something different, or?
No, I mean, it just. Compliance, really.
When business, business been at fifty years.
Oh, I know, it's been a long.
But, but when a business changes hands, that's really when it kicked in. So, it changed to a different business, their grandpa was in, this created the fact, they need to have this rezoning change. So, that's really what prompted it, and staff noticed it, we, we told them the proper way of it, that having that happen.
I move with ordinance nine thirty-seven with emergency.
Second.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Next action item, consider appointing the Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustments. These come up every so often, uh, just different rotations that we have on our different boards. And in this particular, we've got a couple to look at here. Corky Kerr is actually on the Planning and Zoning Board and on the Board of Adjustments. And right now, he is actually the chairman. We have touched base with him, and he is interested in continuing. I know, you know, that he lives outside the city, but I also know from following that, being on the particular board, the variance board, that, uh, he is a good of Board of Adjustments, I call it, right? He is a good, uh, understander of what we're doing, what we're trying to do. Any other names that we would have? Um, I would say probably, in my opinion, at least, we need to wait till we have an opening where we have someone who is wanting to come off. But.
Council, I, I have a recommendation. I've visited with Aaron Hemingway this afternoon briefly and touched, and he, he expressed some interest in becoming part of the, Planning and Zoning Board or Board of Adjustments. And, um, I, I told him that I would give back with him some more information, but, uh, he was very positive about the, the appointment. I, I would, I would like to make a recommendation to appoint, uh, Aaron, Aaron Hemingway to be one of those two boards.
Uh, you don't have to, have somebody that's on both boards, do you, basically?
The city, uh, council, not council, the chair says that there will be at least two members that will serve on both boards. And Mariela Acosta is on both boards, and Corky Kerr is on both boards.
We'd have to do, do you want to put him on both boards?
Yeah.
Corky, then, then make a decision.
So, that, that's replacing Corky, is that what that would be?
Yeah. What is the, uh, what is this procedure for this as far as appointing?
Does Mayor do that?
Mayor does it.
Mannequin recommendation. Council.
With consent, yeah. I realize Corky's outside, but he's also got a business in town.
Well, his business is involved in some of this kind of stuff, isn't it?
Well, he has a great understanding, and I, I am one of those people that, you know, I, I didn't have a great understanding in going on the Board of Adjustments, and I felt like I'd learned a lot when I was, when I first got on there. I have some reservations when I look at this about pulling our chairman off, because we have had and continue to have some very, a, a little bit of a lengthy history on these boards, it's very helpful. And although I definitely encourage, you know, anyone who wants to be on, um, my thought process is we need to leave Corky on here. He has a great understanding of it, he's been a good governor of it, and, uh, putting someone new on that has really no background in it, that, that has the ability to, uh, has the ability to really change the makeup and the understanding of both of these, these boards. And they deal with difficult things. They end up in our lap after they're through with them, so.
Well, and, and this person would be the chairman, not just a member.
No, they'll, if he's, if he comes off, they'll probably reselect.
They'll, they'll select somebody else.
Yeah. So.
What's your?
My call is to leave Corky on there and make sure that next time we have an opening, that we get with him. I think he's first in line, of course, end of the year, end of the year, but I, I think when you find a person who wants to do it, they're always appreciated.
And I, I think that's acceptable. I just, I just wanted to let you know that there's a name out there that would be one to, to serve on, on board.
We definitely, I, I would say, Steve, put that in the back of your head.
Absolutely, I'm sure.
And we have people come along, a lot of times people would like to get off, but they don't think there's a body there to come on, so they continue to do the job. So, there may be someone who, you know, realizes and reads or hears the stories that'll come out of this, and they may say, hey, I'd like to take my turn off, so. We'll see, but I, I think he would be an excellent addition. I love, people who own businesses, I think, have a, you know, sometimes it takes a little time to be able to, uh, get up to speed on it. So, that would be my feeling. I'm sure he'll do a great job, it has very little to do with that, it's just the continuity that I think Corky brings to it, and his understanding because of the business he's in, and the years he's served on both of those boards. So, uh, I, I would, so I would recommend that Corky continue, and, uh, I believe, you know, as has been the custom and ordinary, the custom thing we've done in the past, I'll bring that to you and ask for a motion in a second to continue with him.
I'll make a motion to continue with Corky Kerr. It's a two, I forgot the length of the service. Three, three, I was second.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes, and I do appreciate that, because people who will step up are, are far and few between, so we will see if we can find him a spot.
Well, we need to get Aaron involved, because I don't think he's doing anything. He's sitting particularly, so.
Yeah.
He's a smart, good guy, I think we need to, yeah, find some more, and we need to do it.
Uh, Paul Adams serves on the personnel board. What, uh, what do we, he's old, okay. Were there any, any others? Use the personnel board, it's kind of a specific thing to, there's some experience. I don't know if they've met, if they would want. I entertain a motion then to, uh, return Paul Adams to the personnel board.
Second.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
And Steve, you want to mention these last two that are under your provision?
Well, basically, the library board, City Manager, uh, points those, and we pointed Heather at Livingstone, and, um, we'll, uh, probably appoint Sally as well. I haven't officially done that yet, but I'll, I'll probably do that, she will serve again, so.
And you're already moving things.
No, no.
Moving on, uh, consider proclamation regarding emergency medical services week. Designation for EMS week as designated for emergency medical services, and there is a proclamation, and we just asked that we, in motion to direct the mayor to sign this proclamation.
Second. Second.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
Yes. Any comments?
Oh, no, thank you.
We appreciate what y'all do. I, I never seek to be made, so, you know, we get to living our lives, and somebody needs help, and, uh, I think that all the way through the emergency medical system, most people, if they haven't been in it once or twice, they will before they're, they're, they're at the end of their rope, so. We appreciate what y'all do, and hopefully that reflects our, our support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next action item, consider change order one and two with, uh, calling an extraction on the remodel to the police department. Steve, give us an overview.
Okay, council, a couple items here. Um, in the jail cell, a laboratory closet needed to be added, which was not, uh, was somehow, um, left off the plans, as well as, um, with some value engineering, as you remember in our budgeting, um, in, in the bid offer, that we had, we were able to save some money. We, visiting with the chief, we want to add electric strikes, carb readers to, um, more doors, create more safety, more, more, uh, control for the P D area, as well as we had a main line issue, drain issue in the sink area that collapsed, have to be redug, since happens to remodel, uh, that's being dug out right now, pending, um, the acceptance of that. Those items are, change order one. Change order two, uh, is changing out diffusers and adding baseboard, interiors. We, we tried to look at, uh, a, a, a non-baseboard in the hallways, did not look well, did not look good with the funding we had, you know, as well as availability and our value engineering. Plus, our continues to get way different than that at all yet. Um, we want to put baseboards in, change our diffusers out, save a little money there on the vents, and then add some baseboard. That's a, that's a small addition of nine hundred and forty-six dollars. So, the one being thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and nine forty-six would be change order one and two. Staff recommends a, uh, approval to those.
Questions or comments from council?
We're still within budget, we're still meeting that one below budget, so we're fine.
I move we approve change order one and two. I second.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, how is it, how goes it?
Uh, it's noisy. Lot of dirt. Uh, we should do the, the, hopefully the concrete pour, we'll cut out for the sewer line Thursday. Waiting on some parts. We can get some parts in, we'll get a lot of completion done, but we're about eighty to ninety percent tore up down there. But, uh, it, it will happen fast when we get the parts in, we got some lead time, and we're still waiting on those, but I think we're doing well.
Appreciate the information. City Manager's report for the Clinton City Council.
I was just going to sound, pointing to committee chief, I had an opportunity to go down last weekend, it just looked wonderful down there. A lot of the ways that he saves some money, even just beginning with the furniture, he's just done an outstanding job with that project, and he's been committing on that, and the staff that has come through and did that, it's great.
City Manager's report for the City of Clinton.
Well, I was just piggybacking off, uh, what Councilwoman Smith was saying, though, I would encourage you to take a look at it, get a chance after the meeting, and anytime during the day. It does look much better. It's more professional, um, our squad room is basically ninety percent done, and so our officers are able to have their own stations, laptops, professional, so I'm very, very pleased with that. Um, the only other thing I would say is basically, um, I, uh, our fire chief, uh, we might be here tonight, but we'll make sure he's here before. He has announced his retirement, so after thirty-two plus years, in seventeen years as fire chief, Wade Eners will be retiring at the end of the month. And he'll be, he will remain in, in Clinton, but, um, um, but he's going to retire from the fire service. Been a big help to me, and, and completing plans to get her for our fire station, which we'll open those bids in two more weeks, we're excited about that.
I asked Jason when I walked in, he was going to start cooking. She didn't think so. I want to pour that beer.
So, he's skinny enough already. I don't, I, some tells me he's eating her cooking, because he's like me, he's a healthy man, so. Well, we'll look forward to him being here, but I think everyone, I, I was a volunteer for twelve, I had twelve years, and, uh, Wade is, uh, he's been in the park for a long time, and he knows a lot of what's gone down, the history of it. And so, it's, it's good to be fewer and fewer of those guys that can talk about Atwoods, and, uh, you know, one of those guys can talk about pop, pop hicks, but, uh, the, the, uh, different buildings that have gone down, I guess, the, uh, steakhouse, in different places. So, uh, he has been through a lot of them, and I know he started as a very young man, and that's why he's still very, very younger. I won't stop there, I'm going to get myself in trouble. So, we'll look forward to saying goodbye to him and issuing him the best of, uh, best of wishes. Uh, nothing else in the City Manager's report?
That's it.
Audience participation under the city of Clinton. This would be a general item, if you have anything connected with the city of Clinton that you haven't brought up yet, this would be your opportunity. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of Clinton City Council.
I move.
Second. Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
And Mayor.